City Council Regular Session Meeting for the City of North Plains, Monday, June 5th, 2023, at 7:00. We are going to dispatch of the budget pages. We had an urban renewal agency meeting earlier, or to this one. Welcome, please. Thank you. Mayor Lenihan, here, Council Page.
Yes.
Council Kendall.
Here.
Payton.
Here.
Council Sheldon.
Present.
Council Smith.
Here.
And Council Marko. Thank you very much, Laurie. Appreciate that. I'm item number five in our agenda. It's the consent agenda. And it's part of that approval. Anyone who has more game and it's on. Consent agenda. Tonight, we have the June 5th. Regular session agenda. In addition, we have 15th, 2023, City Council Minutes. Are there any differences to the minutes that we need to be aware of? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Consent agenda.
I look for approval of the incentive agenda for June 5th, 2023, North Plains City.
Any opposed? Say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Item six is the public comment period. The time that we ask anyone in attendance that wishes to speak about something not. And if there's anyone in the hall, please go. Let the record show, no one in the halls has come forward. Is there that wishes to speak during public comment about items not on the agenda? There's a hand waiting. I think that might be.
Just.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right, I'm gonna take that as a note and move on. Thank you very much. All right, item number seven. We have a few resolutions this evening to address. And first up is Resolution 2231, establishing the eligibility for the city to receive state shared revenues. And Andy or Bill, who's gonna take this? Bill, are you gonna take this one?
Sure. I'll be the take this. So before you, we have two resolutions that have to do with declaring and receiving state share revenues. It's June again. And so we do this every year. So that's important to mind it, but as well as it's standard procedure. So 2231 before you is the first resolution. And like every year before, we as a city have to recognize that we provide a number of key services to our residents and businesses and others within the city that qualify the city to receive from the state, shared revenues of a variety of types. And because we provide police protection, street construction, planning and zoning services, and water utility, we are qualified to receive state shared revenues for those reasons. And so I would propose to council passing Resolution Number 2231, declaring that we are eligible for shared revenues from the state people services we provide.
Okay. Any questions for Bill?
This is for 2031 and also 2222, right?
We're gonna take them separately? So I do not see any questions for Resolutions 2231. At this time then, do I have a motion to move forward?
If so, make a motion. I move to adopt the Regulation 2231, elect receive state shared revenues in the certified provision of municipal service to the family's eligibility of the city of North Plains to receive shared revenues. Your 2023, maybe 24.
All right, we have a person, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carry.
Fair?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Council Kendall, thank you.
Sorry.
Would you like me to announce each one?
You help it out of them.
Not a lot, thank you, yeah. All right, next on our agenda is Resolution 532. This one is declaring election to receive state shared revenues for fiscal year 2023, 2025. Is that, before we move on, I wanted, I didn't think that off of the agenda that I noticed that on the actual reason, where the resolution is chose 2324, so I wanted to make sure the form was.
Mayor, 2324. So this resolution, this resolution before and this resolution are purely for me fiscal year. Our budget is biannual, but these, these resolutions have to be on fiscal year basis.
Thank you. Bill, do any explanation, please?
Very quickly, under Oregon State law, City Council has to recognize through the resolution eligibility for state shared revenues and then has to pass a second resolution, and this is the resolution where the city elects to receive those state shared revenues. And so has to do with this resolution, whether they last.
Okay, any questions for Bill? Hearing none. All of you, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2232?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2232, a resolution of City Council, City of North Plains, declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues for fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first by Council. Sheldon, second by Council Page. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. All those in favor say aye. Sorry about that.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Next up is Resolution 2233. This is adopting the fiscal year 2023, 2025, North Plains budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2233, actually, there's names. First, as you expressed, passage of this resolution comes by, by passage of this resolution, council adopts the 2023, 2025 biennial budget that the Budget Committee recommended for approval to you after meeting three times, on April the 19th, May the 4th, and then on May, excuse me, May 3rd, and then on May 24th, with some final adjustments. The second part of this resolution, 2233, adopts levying, full permanent levy rate, property tax rate for fiscal year 2324, of $2.17 per $1,000 of taxable assessed value. So by adopting this resolution, the new biennial budget is adopted and the state, excuse me, the city levies the whole permanent tax rate.
Any questions for Bill? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2233 to adopt a budget, make appropriations, and declare an ad pro hora tax levy for fiscal year 2023 and 20.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first by Council Page, second by Council Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Council Payton, I am watching you. Raise your hand. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right. All right, next on our agenda is the public hearing and ordinances. So tonight, we have two public hearings and process purposes. Lori will read the first legislative public hearing script. We'll discuss that one, and then she'll have to read a second script for the second public hearing. And before we move forward, and I have Lori read that, I just want to make sure that anyone in the audience who wishes to speak during either one of these public hearings, if you have not already filled out a pink card, please come up and see Lori.
Also, your intention is not to speak, but you get kind of caught up in that. You said you want to do it anyway. This is probably harder.
Lauren? Thank you. The North Plains City Council will conduct a legislative public hearing regarding file CPA 23-056 (2), Housing Needs Analysis (HNA) update. The order of business will be as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and request the staff report. The council, councilors may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of this item will be presented along with the individual's name and address. The public will be invited to provide oral testimony on the proposed Housing Needs Analysis update. Additional staff comments will then be presented. The councilors will call for council comments. The mayor will call for council comments and discussion. The mayor will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide your full name and correct mailing address or a preferred their email address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and development standards thus by applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed Housing Needs Analysis update. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing was sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and the parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. Great, thank you very much, Lori. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at 7:13. So Andy, I'm gonna turn this over to you and Bill. Okay.
Okay. Well, and what I will do in time is. Starting with each and everything, the housing needs analysis. Okay, let me pull up. Presentation.
Thank you, Andy. Well, Andy gets that queued up. I'm Heather Austin with 3J Consulting, accompanied by Steve House, also the 3J Consulting. We have helped the city with both the HNA, which is the subject of this current public hearing, as well as the Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Report that will be the next public hearing this evening. There are two hearings, as I said. The first, the Housing Needs Analysis is part of the Urban Growth Boundary Expansion. It is the residential land need basis for that report, so adopting or making some sort of decision on this document first makes sense. So apologies that we called it subsection two for this one, and the other one, subsection one. We are planning to review both, and they're both part of the same application to the state as far as letting them know we're making updates. So that city file number is the same for both. So, next slide, please, Andy. So the Housing Needs Analysis in general has four goals. To predict, project the amount of land need to accommodate residential growth over the next 20 years within the city, to evaluate what capacity we have in the current city limits and urban growth boundary to accommodate some of that growth or all of it, if possible, to identify how we want to do that, and then to start as the city's factual basis when looking at how much and if we need to expand the city's boundary within the next 20 years. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this HNA update, and again, I want to focus on that work update. The Housing Needs Analysis was crafted in 2017 by Echo Northwest. It was adopted by the city and accepted by the state, so it has been in place as the city's factual basis of projected land need. However, in 2020, the Portland State University did a projection in population update that's been certified that changed the numbers slightly, the way that population is expected to grow within the city of North Plains, as well as many cities throughout the state. Therefore, to be able to use this or this Housing Needs Analysis as our residential land basis for our urban growth boundary work, we were required to update the Housing Needs Analysis, and so we did that analysis in 2022. The reason we didn't adopt that analysis in 2022 is because there are laws regarding when you demonstrate a need for residential growth, you then have to demonstrate how you will accommodate that residential growth. And here in North Plains, because we cannot accommodate it all within the city limits, even with, you know, more efficient use of land, which the city has adopted, we need to look at that urban growth boundary expansion, which comes later this evening. Next slide, please. So this is just kind of a graphic of what that means, that to establish how much land the urban growth boundary may need to expand by, we look at three things. We look at the urban, the economic opportunities analysis, which was previously adopted by the city in November of 2022. We look at the Housing Needs Analysis for adoption this evening, and then we look at how much capacity is within the city limits. And when we looked at that capacity, we had to look at, is the city developing now and will develop in the future at an efficient capacity level? And we determined that it was not as efficient as it could be, given the characteristics. Maybe once a month for living kind of thing. 2021, including limiting single family detached, all in the Highlands of the zoning district. Making more middle housing permitted in the medium density. These were things that required more. On the side of North Plains, outside of the UGV.
Can you hold for just a second?
So we knew.
If you have not muted your phone, or iPad, or PC, could you please make sure that you're on mute? Thank you.
So apologies for not pausing there. I get on a roll and it's hard to stop. So the Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Report that you're going to see later this evening is based on the adopted EOA, the Housing Needs Analysis before you tonight, and the capacity of the city now that the city has adopted land use efficiency measures to allow more types of housing in smaller lot sizes in some instances within the current city limits and also applicable to future expansion areas. So kind of a double efficiency there, if you will. The, the basis that we are using is required by the state. We are required to establish 20-year land need in both residential and employment. So that is what, that's how the needs analysis will feed into that Urban Growth Boundary Report. Next slide, please. So there are a few key findings in the Housing Needs Analysis update. One is that we need to provide for the opportunity of a wider range of housing types, which the city did accommodate through some changes to the Development Code adopted last year, and then evaluate how we accommodate the deficit of land for housing. The HNA identified about 1,350 dwelling units that would be needed over the 20-year horizon. The identified capacity in this Housing Needs Analysis is 558 dwelling units. That seems high because it was done before Brin Hill began to develop. Brin Hill, about 500 dwelling units. So that is the majority, the vast majority of the capacity within the city has been now developed. So what remains is about 790 dwelling units that need to be accommodated. And based on the analysis in the Housing Needs Analysis, we did find that that would take about 167.4 acres. And that's for the residential development, including infrastructure like roadways and public parks, in addition. Public testimony was provided today from Thousand Friends of Oregon that did include some questions about the analysis or how we came to this 167.4 acres, and is particularly regarding the R5, the medium density zoning district. Did everybody get a chance to see that? Okay, great. So we had a chance to look at it as well. So in the Housing Needs Analysis, there's an estimate of 14 acres of land that would potentially be developed as that R5 or medium density development. So that would accommodate about 112 dwelling units at eight dwelling units per acre. The question is, you know, is eight a reasonable number to assume for those 112 acres? Or, excuse me, dwelling unit. So what we did was looked at, well, you know, how certain are we that that's going to be the level of development? And the answer is not very certain. I think that Thousand Friends letter makes a good point that we can't stay with certainty what exactly our density levels will be. So the best thing we can do is make an assumption based on past development trends, current market trends, and what the density allowances are in our current code that will carry forward. And so that's how we've come up with our, with the eight dwelling units perimeter as the target in that zoning district. Could it develop at nine dwelling units per acre target? Sure, that might mean one and a half less acres. Could it develop at seven? Yes, that's also allowed in our density in our archive zone, which would require an extra two acres. So the upshot here is that we need to look at the Oregon Administrative Rule Regarding Urban Growth Boundaries, and that's OAR 6600240040, which states in subsection one. And it's longer than this, but I'm just going to give you one symptom. The 20-year need determinations are estimates, which although based on the best available information and methodologies, should not be held to an unreasonably high level of precision. So the OAR knows that we can't look into a crystal ball and determine exactly how development's going to occur, but we need to take the best data available and put that together and make our best estimate, which we have done in the Housing Needs Analysis this evening. So with that, next slide, please. You are being asked this evening to make a decision on the Housing Needs Analysis update for April of 2022. The staff report and planning commission recommendation include the findings of fact demonstrating compliance of the updated HNA with all applicable city and state regulations. Staff and the planning commission recommend approval of the 2022 HNA update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Heather?
I welcome this meeting done.
It needs to be done every 20 years for sure, but there is a very good likelihood you will need to do it sooner.
It begins in 2017, so.
Yes, and the reason for that is because of the Urban Growth Boundary Expansion. We were not able to rely on our 2017 Housing Needs Analysis because of the updated population estimates. So if you were to do another HNA update or something that would trigger that, it would be sooner. The other way it would be sooner is if the land develops. You know, if your 20-year land supply developed in seven years, you would need to look at, do we need more capacity? So that would be another reason that would be triggered.
We don't have to ask these will develop, because when the Senate gave us, I think it's the measures 1458, that was the right one, for less people, just if there is a UGV, just going to start building.
Right. In 2017, the legislature changed the rules around when, when a vote of the populace is required for annexation. So I, I don't know what would happen with the UGV expansion, and that's the next public hearing, but what we would look at is expanding the UGV, and then it would really be up to the re-concept plan in the city, and then it would be up to property owners to decide whether or not to take this up sort of annexation, that they would be able to do that. They'd have to demonstrate that it's economic, it's efficient, and services can be provided, and that it's not, you know, unreasonably unfeasible to do that. But you're right, you could annex the land if you were in the UGV and have been concept planned for that.
Heather, could you clarify why we are bringing this 2022 Housing Needs Analysis forward in 2023, please?
Yes. So we did the work of the Housing Needs Analysis based on the population updates in 2022 when we crafted the Phase One Urban Growth Boundary Report. So it made sense at that time. We also adopted the land use efficiency measures that changed some of those base zoning for residential uses in 2022. However, we weren't able to move forward with adoption on this report until the UGV was ready to demonstrate how we will accommodate the needed land.
Council Payton, I want to make sure that your voice is heard. I can't see you, but I'm going to just call you out. Do you have any questions for Heather at this time?
At this time, no. Thank you so much.
Council Smith, any questions for Heather at this time? Council Page, you're good. Council Kendall, anything?
No.
And Council Sheldon?
I don't think I have any questions in the report. Basically, goal 15 through goal 18 silent until I read goal 19. I just felt like it's, it's a technicality, but I felt like they should each be answered in and of themselves in the report. Otherwise, I don't have any further questions.
All right, so at this time, we will open it up for public, invite the public up to give testimony on Resolution 489, the Housing Needs Analysis. And it appears that the majority of the folks in the room wish to speak on Resolution 490, but there is one person that has listed on the card the proposed ordinance 489 and 490. And I just want to ask Melanie McAdams if you wish to speak on 489.
I do. Can I divide up my comment between you?
Yes, I can call on you for 490 as well, so. But this is just 489 for the Housing Needs Analysis.
Right. Okay, and thank you, Mayor. I will provide my comment on 489 then.
Okay, if you come up to the table, and then we ask you to say your name and address for the parking place. One of those microphones should, and hopefully both of them are operational. Hello?
You'll have to.
Hello?
Just hold it down. Yeah.
There.
Goodbye.
Hello? Yeah, and just to remind you, we have a three-minute comment period, okay? And then Lori will keep time for the three minutes.
Council members, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Melanie McAdams. My address is 9724 Southwest Lancaster Road, over in Oregon, 9721. I'm from Yanhill County, I live in Multnomah County, and I roots in North Washington County, maybe back to my great-grandgrand grandmother's grave in a fantasy cemetery. And I will try to divide up my comments here. But to start, according to Housing Needs Analysis, North Plains has an existing lack of affordable housing. Washington County averages just 61% single-family detached housing, whereas North Plains share has increased from 83% in 2000 to 88% in 2019 of its single-family dwellings. This is the least efficient land use and the least affordable housing type possible. The proposed plan would require new housing, not including Brin Hill development, to be 70% single-family detached, which would decrease the percent of single-family detached housing by only 4% to 84. If the city built no more single-family detached housing, this housing type would still represent 65% of total housing by 2038, or a surplus of 109 homes to meet the Washington County average. The proposal's housing densities for low, medium, and high are also far too low, with the median density being closer to DLC's recommendations for low density. And the city makes few efforts to provide housing production strategies to incentivize increasing density first within the UGV. This was recommended strongly and repeatedly in the HNA report. We have the city did not include changes such as permitting residences in commercial districts, decreasing a lot size to 5,000 square feet, et cetera. I urge the city to consider affordable housing and the decrease of the use of land and the waste of agricultural land that would suffer from an inefficient housing pattern. and the um waste of agricultural land that would would suffer from um an inefficient housing pattern. Thank you.
Right, um is there anyone um online that wishes to uh give testimony for resolution four eight nine? Mayor, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that you had to differentiate that that they were going to be separated, but I do have something that I'd like to speak to on this. Yes, but I just put land use. I didn't know you were dividing that, so if I may.
And then you will want to speak on the on resolution four ninety as well?
Please.
Okay, so please come up to the table, say your name and address for the record. And again, this is for resolution four eight nine, the housing needs analysis. And um you have three minutes, okay?
You have to hold it down, is that it?
No, turn the other one. There you go.
It's fine. Does that make sense? Okay. So my name's Ayla Hawler. Thank you, mayor and council for lis- listening to us tonight. I guess I'm in opposition to the previous person's testimony because I've lived here for fifty years in this area and the the environment here and the nature of this city has always been rural, and I think it's absolutely mandatory that you maintain the nature of this place. That means that we do have detached, single-family residences, and we have enough land to have some chickens and a dog and things that we can support ourselves in the future. We cannot all depend on Safeway and having cars that that are the size of a roller skate. I just drove through Sherwood the other day, which might be considered great efficiency and high use density, and I couldn't even turn my truck around. And so you you turn North Plains into a place like this, and I say, hell no. This is a rural area. We're country folks and we want to stay that way. So if you take, if you're going to take all our farmland away where we can't grow our crops, then you pretty better give us damn yards that we can feed ourselves out of in the future and have enough room to turn around. We can't, we can't keep packing people in like rats in a U G B. Okay, and I'd like to know how you're going to accommodate the water table and the sewage and the schools, and what are you going to do about the roads and the traffic? You can't keep packing us in here under the name of efficiency and using less farmland. I got news for you. Washington County doesn't give a crack about preserving farmland. They just want more dollars to pay for their insane debt. And North Plains is not going to be the place where they rape us and shut us back together just so they can pay off their insane debt. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on resolution four eighty nine? Did you go out?
We're in Melonaski and uh I'll trade it. I'll I'll speak for this.
Good to see you. Yes, I did phone you. Thank you, Melana. Please say your name and address for the record.
Brad Melonaski, one three four five oh Northwest Springville Lane, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two two nine. Uh I've had some experience with affordable housing in the past. And I can tell you, uh the lady who spoke ahead of me spoke from her heart, I'm sure. The awful truth is that for detached housing, I don't know if you've checked to see what the family income needs to be to buy one. But even back when I was a commissioner, if you did not have a family income of a hundred and twenty five thousand per year, you could not get a mortgage. No one will give you a mortgage for a detached house. And the way the prices have gone up in the last five or six years, my guess is it's pushing a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, or you can just forget about having a detached house and getting a mortgage for it. So if you build nothing but those larger detached houses and tiny lots, you're going to find out that if, you know, they're one and a half million apiece and you're going to have folks who are going to, in order to not if they don't have the cash, regular working folks, they're not going to be able to afford those houses. So all you're building is for elites. I talked to a developer. He said, it's critical that I know what those houses look on, because he said, I sell lots of them by the dozen, and I sell them to people on the other side of the planet who have money and aren't ever going to come here. We just, it's just, they've heard you can't lose money in Oregon if you buy a house. So I would urge you to go ahead and look at getting the size of those lots down and the size of those houses down to where somebody who's only making a hundred thousand dollars a year as a family can actually get a mortgage with twenty percent down and they'll put the rest on the mortgage. It is possible to calculate those. When I worked with Washington County, uh we were able to get those figures. So you might look at the figures of your detached housing that have sold in your area in the last couple of years and see what that's going to, what kind of family income you're actually targeting. Uh my other concern uh that I have is uh and I think critical that fifty percent of what you build here should be available for those folks who just work for a living, because that's also been the bedrock of what North Plains has been over time. Um the industrial land. So you need more jobs here. I don't doubt it. I don't doubt it at all. So are you planning to set some kind of a minimum standard? I mean, if you get a bunch of data centers put in on your industrial land, did you put anybody to work other than building them? Okay, well, I just wanted to point out, it makes a difference. And industrial land has to be protected. Because the first, next thing you'll hear is, I've got industrial land. There's no industry wanting to buy it. So please, so I need to make it housing so I can make some money. And you guys are going to have to be forthright. The city just to the south of you always ask for industrial land? Thank you, and thank you for your time, taking the time to listen to me. But I think this is critical for the long-term health of your community.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your testimony. Thanks for your service. Yes, sir.
Do you have time for one more? Chris Evans?
Yes.
Stick your name.
Thank you, uh Chris Evans. I am representing uh and my address is on the card. I am representing the five landowners uh that are boarded by the west on McKay Creek, south on West Union Road, east on Jackson School Road, and south on Highway twenty six. I hope I got all of that right. I didn't expect to have to testify on this, but I did just want to clarify into the record because it it seems like some folks may not realize, um well-intentioned that you, as a city, undertook a process to update your zoning codes to increase the density um in residential areas last year. It was a public process. It was very transparent and it was deliberative, and I believe we arrived at the right conclusion, which substantially increased the allowable density in certain residential areas for the exact express purpose that I believe many of the people who are sitting behind me are here to talk about tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that that was on record, uh and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else in the hall wishing to speak on resolution four eighty nine? And once again, anyone online wishing to speak on resolution four eighty nine, the housing needs analysis? All right, hearing done. Um are there any additional staff comments?
Thank you, mayor. I I think that would just make us commit, having been here in twenty seventeen when the housing needs analysis was originally done and then going through this update process along with the U G B. Um these comments are not um unheard by the city. We've we've taken in testimony like tonight, both sides of an issue, and uh the housing needs analysis was crafted to really strike a balance, make sure that we are accommodating need in an efficient way within the parameters of where we should be accommodating that need and how we should be accommodating it, but then protecting that land that's farmland that's outside of those areas. So um we really appreciate all of that testimony and and that has been fed into this effort to craft this document tonight.
All right, any any councillors um for last call on the comment discussion? And then at this time, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing on resolution four eighty nine and seven eighty one. Right, at this time, um what is the wish of the council?
I'm going to go ahead and boo uh for approval of ordinance four eight nine, ordinance of the city of uh North Plains adopting an updated housing needs analysis.
All right, we have a motion on the table by councillor Sheldon, signed in by councillor Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those that think or say aye? Any opposed? Say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. All right. Um thank you. I was just trying to find that. So ordinance number four eighty nine is an ordinance, the city council, the city of North Plains, Oregon, adopting an updated housing needs analysis. So this um this ordinance will come back to us uh in, I believe, June twenty fourth, second reading, and then hopefully watching. All right. I have number eight B on um our agenda is the first read, first read by Title One Lee, ordinance number four ninety, adopting the urban road boundary amendment and comprehensive plan text amendment. Um Lori, before I even open up that public hearing, um could you please read the script?
Get microphone orders. The North Plains City Council will conduct a legislative public hearing regarding file number C P eight twenty three dash zero five six parentheses one, urban growth boundary, U G B amendment, and comprehensive plan text amendment. The order of business will be as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and request a staff review. The councillors may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of this item will be presented, including the individual's name and address. The public will be invited to provide oral testimony on the proposed urban growth boundary amendment and comprehensive plan text amendment. Additional staff comments will then be presented. The mayor will call for council comments and discussion. The mayor will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide their full name and correct mailing address or preferred their email address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeal, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and development standards specify a couple criteria to be relied upon in making the decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to oppose urban growth boundary amendment and comprehensive plan text amendment. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to inform the hearing body and the parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue or pursue to appeal to the Oregon land use board.
All right, thank you very much, Lori. Appreciate that. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing at seven twenty five. And I am going to then turn this over to Steve. Are you taking the lead on this or?
I'm actually going to keep. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Lanning, again for the record. Heather Rossman, three J Consulting. We're getting the, with Steve from three J Consulting as well, who will have more to say on this one. Okay. This public hearing um before us currently is regarding two documents. The first is the North Plains Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Report uh dated May of twenty twenty three, as well as updates to the North Plains comprehensive plan to reflect the changes from both the uh U G B and the H and A. So changes to the comp plan were required from both documents, but instead of just duplicating that same document twice or just moving it over with the U G B report. Next slide, please. So just as a a brief recap of the process that um has brought us to you this evening, the uh city convened a project advisory committee in August of twenty twenty, and that team, that that project committee met in public meetings eight times between August twenty twenty and March of this year. Um the U G B pack included uh representatives from your planning commission, city council, parks board, economic development committee, local businesses, as well as agency partners in ODOT, Department of Land Conservation and Development, and Washington County. Next slide, please. The U G B pack oversaw the creation of the report that's before you this evening. The report provides information to need the following steps required by the state in the U G B expansion process. The first was to establish the land need, and again, from the H and A presentation, that's based on the economic infrastructure needs analysis, employment land, the housing needs analysis, residential land, and whatever capacity is available in the current city limits and current U G B subtracted out. We then established the study area. Where can an expansion go? We analyze the study area. Where does it make the most sense within the study area to expand? And then we evaluate those areas. How can these areas be developed? What would be the constraints? What are the opportunities? And there's very specific ways that the state requires us to do that. Then finally, we determine the size and location of the U G B expansion area, which which is in the report before me this evening. Next slide, please. So establish the study area. Um oh, it's hard to see here, but there is um some green uh parcels that are backdrops to gray parcels. And so our study area, the dashed red line circulating the area is one mile above in the current U G B. The gray areas are considered rural reserves. So this is area that's been designated by the state that will not develop with urban land uses uh for fifty years, I believe, from ten years ago, about so about forty years. Um so that leaves us with the green parcels as our study area. We were constrained to looking at only these mid-green parcels. Um this area that's hashed out in the southwest corner of the urban study area is hashed out because it's part of the air acres um residential community. So there uh codes, covenants, restrictions, and other development um pieces that made it um very unfeasible that any future development would occur within the twenty year planning horizon on these properties. So we were able to make a case in the urban growth boundary, um appendix A for exclusion of this hashed area in the southwest corner.
Oh, I'll add uh Heather, that um the green areas are um considered undesignedated. Um in order of priority, um we look at exception land first, um along with urban reserves. The city has no urban reserves. Um and then we move on um to uh undesignedated land. So the green areas are undesignedated, and as Heather mentioned, that's the the uh only areas that North Plains is uh confusingly um expanded to.
In addition, the green areas total approximately one thousand five hundred fifty seven acres. So we were looking at um a total area of that size. That's gross acres. So that includes constraints that would limit development. So that includes constraints that would limit development capability like flood plains and steep slopes. Um, but of that gross acreage, we established that we would need approximately eight hundred fifty-five buildable acres. So, um, that may come up again, so we want to make sure it's really clear that we looked at the overall picture of gross acreage and, but then when we narrowed down and determined the study area, we had to make sure that we were talking about buildable acres that we could make a reasonable assumption that can be developed. Next slide, please. So in order to analyze the UGB study area, we broke it into, um, different study areas, four different study areas, cardinal directions, north, south, east and west. Um, south was mostly taken out with the air acres exclusion, but we did result in about thirty-four acres in the south sub area B, uh, which is shown in yellow, um, at the south of highway twenty-six. And we had to look at four different.
Sorry, Heather, I do want to just establish again the kind of priorities before we go to the, unless you have that on a different slide. So, uh, the city's required in order to first consider, um, urban reserves and what's called, what are called exception lands. The only, and, and what exception lands are is where, um, urban uses are happening on rural lands. And the only place that is happening is in that area south of highway twenty-six where you've got some, um, rural residential. Um, you have, um, some rural commercial and industrial parcels. So we were required to look at the area south of highway twenty-six first. As Heather mentioned, we excluded a portion of that due to the air acres, um, development there. Um, uh, next, uh, we, uh, the city, there's a second category that I think is called marginal lands. Uh, that did not apply here. Um, and then the third and fourth categories in order are low value farmland and then high value farmland. And through our, uh, through the analysis as guided by, um, state guidelines, um, all the remaining lands to the, in the west sub area, the north sub area and the east sub area are all considered high value farmland. So moving forward with the analysis that Heather's about to describe, all the west, the north and the east, from that perspective, were all considered, um, in that same category.
Thanks, Steve. So once we determined that we had equal, uh, availability to look at all of the different lands outside of the south sub area B. So south sub area A was excluded, south sub area B, exception lands, first thing we look at. So we go ahead and say, yep, we did, but foreseeably see, um, employment uses there. Now, it's important to note that, um, many people were here when the urban growth boundary expanded in the early two thousands and the area south of the highway was explicitly excluded because it was being looked at for residential expansion, potentially residential expansion. And that was not seen as something that the city wanted to endeavor to do. So when we looked at it again, we agreed with that earlier analysis that residential expansion is not appropriate south of highway twenty-six, but that employment land, um, some sort of commercial uses can be very appropriate for that area. So then, once we start looking at the east, the north and the west, try to determine what of the remaining acreage, where we should expand the urban growth boundary. The state does require that we look at these four, um, components and they're, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but I think they're considered equal, even though they're listed one, two, three, four, um, they have equal weight to each other. So they shouldn't be considered in a priority order. But you do need to look at where you can efficiently accommodate the land needs, which we talked a lot about efficient land development with the housing needs analysis. We also looked at that with the economic opportunities analysis, um, just to make sure that there were anything there that we could use. Um, you need to be able to orderly, um, and economically provide for public facilities and services. And there we did see some differentiation, the east has, um, quicker availability of public facilities, um, potentially faster development timetables than say the west where there's less facilities available and it'll cost more and take longer to provide services in that direction. Then we looked at environmental, energy, economic and social consequences. There we didn't find a lot of differentiation between the three different sub areas. Um, and the same with the compatibility with nearby ag and forest activities. So they really range pretty similarly on all of those and the detailed analysis of each of these is found in the report those of your packet this evening. Um, so I want to also point out that the requirement, um, that's listed in the thousand friends letter, but we also looked at as we were going through the report is that we need to provide substantial evidence that these criteria are met. And we do feel that the urban growth boundary report before you and the findings in the staff report and the associated letter from city manager Varner on June first do provide substantial evidence that these four criteria are being met and that the, um, urbanization analysis was done, um, in accordance with state law. Next slide, please. The planning commission and the pack both put forward this recommendation to, um, expand along the dashed purple line. So the, the dark green line is what your eyes drawn to and that is our original study area. So those are those green, mid-green parcels from our original, um, what we could look at. And what we, what the pack came up with over that two and a half year process was the dashed purple line. Um, so that again is about eight hundred fifty-five point two buildable acres. And it includes areas that are able to accommodate both residential and employment land based on the EOA and the HNA. Um, and we'll show you in a few minutes some land use assumptions that were made to establish that land. But we did want to make sure that, um, we showed the overall UGB without those land use assumptions because they're not part of the decision that the city is making this evening or that through the public hearing process. You, um, need to establish a factual basis for determining the amount of land needed and where that land is located. But then when you go to adopt the actual urban growth boundary, you're not adopting those land uses yet until you go through a concept planning process. That might be a little complicated, but we can talk more about that. Um, in the western portion of your screen, so the far left, you'll see a hashed designator going the opposite direction of that south area. And that just designates an area that you also saw in the thousand friends letter and that you as a council have talked about that, um, Senate bill or does, um, have some areas that could be considered for semiconductor manufacturing. Um, and that would be a five hundred acre area that could be considered that. So just to clarify, as I know there's some confusion brought up in the thousand friends letter about what that means for this urban growth boundary expansion. And it just, it, we wanted to make sure that it's clear that we know that that is also occurring, but that our urban growth boundary expansion is based on the need demonstrated in the economic opportunities analysis that does not include the SB four land consideration. So it is separate, it would be, um, obviously a little bit of land in addition to what we are, um, proposing for UGB expansion because in the northwest corner, you can see that the hashed area goes outside of what we are proposing for UGB expansion as well as this area here. So the five hundred acre site encompasses land both within and without of the proposed UGB expansion area. Uh, next slide, please. The planning commission did recommend this boundary, this UGB expansion with two modifications. The first is that we include this triangle portion of the property shown in the red below. Um, there is some discrepancy as to why this property is not currently within the city's UGB and in fact, some variation in mapping amongst various agencies. The planning commission recommends adding this property into the UGB expansion. Though it's not included in the formal UGB analysis, the buildable potential of this piece of property does not represent a significant change to the city's whole fourteen analysis of lands to be brought into the UGB and falls within that, you know, appropriate, um, approximation of land needed. So, um, any commission recommends including this in, in the mapping is actually shown as already in the city's UGB. So the line stays the same. The second, um, the second planning commission recommendation, you're not supposed to be able to read this from here. It's just supposed to be a picture of it, but they asked us to draft a narrative description of the entire UGB boundary. And this is because, um, you have a planning commissioner who is, um, really familiar with cartography and survey and understands what can happen if the intent of a line drawn on a map doesn't get carried forward or if there's attrition or turnover. And so, um, the planning commission specifically asked us to go through and say exactly where the line follows a street center line or follows a property line or makes a turn and in appropriate cases, give that reason why. So that is included in your packet this evening is on page one hundred and ninety-nine and two hundred. Um, and we did want to make sure that that got in there because the planning commission did recommend that. Next slide, please. At the planning commission meeting, there was public testimony submitted by the entities and, and people listed on the slide, uh, before you. In addition, um, after the planning commission meeting, uh, city manager Andy Varner did submit a letter into the record on June first, two thousand twenty-three, supplementing the city's findings of fact related to the UGB expansion and comprehensive plan text amendment. The letter from, uh, Mr. Varner should be considered an addendum to the city's staff report to city council, which can be found at pages one ten of your packet and for some reason, again, at two seventy-nine of your packet. We put it in there twice, wanted to make sure that staff report was in there. Uh, and it was published and distributed last week. Um, there was more testimony submitted today, this afternoon. Um, I mentioned thousand friends of Oregon, there was also testimony from Twolton Valley Irrigation District, um, as well as a private individual, I believe, my do not have apologies. Who is the chair or president of Twolton Valley Soil and Water Conservation District, I believe, is here with me. So hopefully we can capture every apology, thank you. Um, Dean Over submitted testimony into the record that's happening as well. So you should have all those pieces of public testimony, um, to be added in addition to what you've heard before you this evening. Um, that is the extent of what we've received in writing or at the planning commission in writing or verbally to date. Okay, and there's copies available with the counselors, you need to need that. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, I mentioned this earlier and, and this slide might be slightly out of order, but, um, these are the land use assumptions that we did apply with the pack, the pack came to these, um, employment and residential lands, so employment being in the blue and residential being in the yellow to make some sort of, um, get, uh, you know, educated assumptions about how land might develop within that UGB area. So there is some, um, ongoing discussion about how far residential continues around the school, um, near Sunset Ridge as well as some discussion about where the line breaks between residential and employment to the north. Um, but again, those colors on the map are not being adopted with this urban growth boundary expansion. They are just assumptions used to determine the urban growth boundary expansion and the concept planning process that the city will enter into next will be where you apply these land uses and determine how that develops. Um, and I'll mention also, there were some comments about why more of the north area was not designated to come in, um, as, oh, excuse me, here, uh, north of Brin Hill, because there are some streets now that connect to that area. Um, and that is because we, um, were limited in the amount of acreage we could designate toward residential. We wanted to make sure we were accommodating some residential land to, um, finish out this Sunset Ridge area as well as being near the new school and connected to the, the downtown. We see this as a potential for a medium or higher density type residential. And then, once you've filled in some acreage here, you, you don't have as much acreage left in the north to go further, um, north of Brin Hill, if you want to be able to preserve an opportunity for like a public park around the reservoir. Um, so that is why the boundary goes along this line rather than looping further north of Brin Hill.
If I could expand a little bit, thanks Heather. Um, so we know that, um, the city needed to expand, uh, to this south, this thirty-four acres first according to the, um, priority, um, scheme that's set forward by the state. Um, next, the pack really looked to this, uh, eastern sub area because it is the most development ready. Um, so after that, um, the pack really had a decision to make about, um, expanding north or west. And there were several factors there, one is Heather stated, um, the pack really felt that this northern area was more appropriate for residential development and, uh, the city's limited in how much, you know, this, this, uh, one hundred and sixty-seven acres is all that can be expanded for residential purposes. Um, uh, employment, uh, uh, uses were deemed by the pack to be much more appropriate in this western sub area where there's better, um, access to, um, highway twenty-six, um, less of a, a concern about heavy truck traffic, um, um, on Glencoe. Uh, so that was some of the reasoning that the pack had, just the, uh, behind, um, placing some residential in the north, but then, uh, placing the, the remainder, again, as Heather said, um, these land uses are not, can, can be tweaked, but in terms of, uh, planning purposes, they thought it makes sense for, um, the rest of the expansion land to go in the west for those appointments.
Thank you, Steve. Next slide, please. So with that, uh, we are looking at the proposed update to the North Plains Comprehensive Plan. Several chapters, um, were updated with background information and are updated to reflect both that HNA that we spoke about earlier this evening and the UGB expansion report that's before you at this public hearing. The last time we updated the comprehensive plan was in November of twenty twenty-two when we, uh, adopted the economic opportunities analysis. Next slide, please. The city council this evening is being asked to make a final decision on both the North Plains UGB expansion final report and the North Plains Comprehensive Plan text amendments. The staff report as well as the supplemental letter from city manager Andy Varner dated June first, twenty twenty-three and the planning commission recommendation include the findings of fact demonstrating compliance of the document with all applicable city and state regulations. Staff and the planning commission recommend approval of the UGB expansion final report and comprehensive plan text amendment. Uh, one more slide. And just to, um, just to look at the next step, so the city's decision, um, is the final decision for the city. Uh, but then Washington County holds similar public hearings, county commission to, uh, make the decision to, um, you know, because this is a change of land use between the city and the county. Um, then, once that decision is made, we do submit the decision to the Department of Land Conservation Development. The director issues the decision. And generally, then it goes to the, um, land conservation.
And then merge, this is where you have to kind of go back across to the left.
If you, uh, excuse me, for folks online, if you've just joined us, could you please use your, uh, your phone or your PC, please? Thank you.
Um, so just finally, the land, um, conservation and development commission will conduct a meeting to acknowledge the UGB expansion. So there's, there's still a few steps in the process, once the city makes the decision. Um, it, it does move on then to other bodies and boards to look at this as well. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions along with Steve.
All right. We should probably go through and get the public testimony first and then, um, you know, to consult question and that sort of thing. So, um, we have several folks who do wish to speak on this agenda item. And again, if you're in the hall and you have not filled out a card, I ask you please to be lording for that. Um, because we do have so many folks that wish to speak on this item, uh, we really do need to limit your time to three minutes. And I'll do my best to kind of keep an eye on it, but, um, I'm also going to provide heavily on, uh, Lori, our city reporter. And I don't have, um, I have the cards, but I'm just gonna call you on, if there's no particular rhyme or reason, um, on how, who goes first and second and so on and so forth. So, um, if you're online and you also wish to provide public testimony, just make sure that you raise your hand and we will definitely adjust you after we have heard from everyone in the hall. Good, all right. Uh, first person, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name, please correct me. Uh, the first person I have here is, um, Bobby Newolini. Sweet, wanna? And we ask you to just identify yourself and, um, state your name and have us remember.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name is Bobby Newolini, um, my address is one three three eight three Northwest Park Street, thanks Oregon. Uh, manage the Twolton Valley Irrigation District and I wrote a letter today just to express what sort of questions or considerations the, uh, effects of the urban growth boundary proposal is going to have on agricultural land. That's kind of on a higher level, on a lower level, PVA D. This expansion, especially the western portion, is going to encroach into the PVA D's boundary. Uh, we have a hundred and forty-seven acres, which is half of that proposed, that's under consideration for the semiconductors. Those hundred and forty acres are part of the Twolton project, so they are assessed acres. And they make annual repayments to Bureau of Reclamation as a repayment contract for the project. On top of that, there's another two miles of various pipelines that extend from Dershow Road 26 cross over all of the proposed areas and border some of the areas and ultimately end up at Humphrey Development Forest and deliver the irrigation water there. On top of the infrastructure that we operate and maintain, those are enclosed within Bureau of Reclamation easements, which can be very difficult to abandon and you won't abandon it unless you acquire new easements. You acquire new easements, goes through the legal process. There would be cultural reviews, natural resource reviews, engineering reviews. And it could take a while and there's alternatives, but I want the city to know that those alternatives may not be realized. You might be sitting on land with the intent of building on agricultural land that you might not be able to future. So I just thought that should be under consideration for you all to consider. Lastly, I would hope if the urban growth boundary, excuse me, I have to pull this up. If the urban growth rounding is to be approved, I would expect the city to adhere to Oregon devised statute 92.103, the notice to a district of a tentative plan. But if you do have plans to tender plan for proposed plat or proposed subdivision or partition is subject to review under Boris 92044 and is located in whole or in part within boundaries of an easement a right of way of an irrigation district. A city shall submit notice of the tender plan to the district. So I'm requesting that you do so if any land is going to develop within the district boundaries. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next up, I have Erin Nichols.
I'm wondering whether you can do a, if you could take someone else first. I guess, wait, we have two children who are playing on a playground and we are on hold, thank you. But not experience them.
I understand, it's like the two places at once. Next up, Dean Mobergh.
My name is Dean Mobergh, I have that 13070 Northwest East Mon in Portland, that's in Cedar Valley, unincorporated Washington County. Mayor Lenahan, President Sheldon, I just thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed UGB boundary expansion as it's currently written. I'm the Director of the Twelton Valley Conservation District, but I'm speaking here tonight on my behalf and on behalf of that board, which is not formally considered the UGB expansion. I've worked in the field of agriculture for about 50 years in four different states and and recently co-authored a book, Reverend of the soils of Oregon, so I know a little something about soil. I tell you that the proposed expansion of UGB includes sites that average about 85%, actually over 85% prime farmland and are mostly rated as high capability class one and two soils, which are the very best soils for farming in Washington County and Oregon and truly in the United States and the world. So the permanent urbanization of these uniquely productive soils is going to have irreversible harms to the agricultural community, agricultural economy, green spaces, and really the livability of Washington County. In the North Plains UGB Expansion Final Report dated June 2023, there's one table, table 34, that talks about agricultural and forestry compatibility analysis. And no offense to the consultants, but it seemed to be that the farmers weren't putting this this compatibility analysis together. And several papers that talks about farms in this area growing wildflowers, which is, I don't think, true in any place close to North Plains. And my conclusion is that it would have only moderate impacts on agriculture. And I would encourage you to pay more attention to what the farmers in the room here say about the impacts that will happen to their livelihoods from both they're pulling heavy equipment down roads and normal farming practices like tillage and pesticide applications and so forth. I'd be better to pay attention to them and pay attention to table 34 in a little bit. Thank you, Ben, for the ability to come tonight and thank you for your service to North Plains.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Right, next up, I have Victor Tim, Tim Chong.
Victoria, she just, I could take her spot, she can take my.
Are you, are you, oh, okay, sorry. Erin, are you ready to speak? All right, great.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. For the record, my name is Erin Nichols. I live at 11,000 Northwest Jackson 40 Road. My business, Dumbo Farm, is right next door, 10850 Northwest Jackson 40 Road. Hello, Mayor, Lenahan and council members, my name is Erin Nichols, I run a CSA vegetable farm in Jackson 40 Road. I'm testifying today to ask that you reconsider the UBG expansion. I believe the current plan is bad for many of the vibrant businesses that currently surround North Plains. It's beyond the capacity and the needs of the city and doesn't envision a broad enough community today. It doesn't envision a resilient enough community in 20 years. My farm's just a few minutes drive from this community center. We're small, as farms go, with about 15 acres in production, but we provide 500 families with vegetables and employ 10 people in the summers and six people year round. Like many small businesses and almost all ag businesses, we're local, we have local suppliers. Nearly all of the 600,000 or so in revenue stays right here in the state, not in the county. I'll also say that I like being in the community here. I sell CSAs to North Plains residents, I enjoy the summer festivals, I appreciate the amenities, my kids are playing on the park out there. If you were to ask me as a business owner what I want to see in North Plains, I'd be happy to tell you. You know, I'd love more, to see more repaired equipment stores, a tractor dealership to replace the metro new pollen, housing, the working class folks, like the ones who've worked for me for years can afford to buy or rent. I'd also tell you that none of this requires significant UGB, UBG expansion onto farmland. North Plains' proposed urban growth boundary expansion doesn't simply ignore ag businesses like mine and others in the room. It actually harms them by making it harder to farm, driving up land prices and leaving less of the best farmland for future generations. In short, it imperils not only the financial sustainability of businesses that you already have here, but also the community networks of farming and that we really need to keep farming viable in North Washington County. Farming, it goes without saying, is a land-based business. Your current proposal paves over about 850 acres of high-class farmland, including many of the 11 speeds and wood-burned soil types. I know we're good soils because I farm them myself. That alone is a reason to oppose this plan. Whereas the plan includes TVID land, land with water infrastructure and a long history of productive farm use. The land's irreplaceable and it shouldn't be traded away for housing or industry that could go elsewhere unless important land. And moreover, good farming is made of more than just good farmland and water. It's made of healthy farming communities and well-supported farmers. By fragmenting the land, driving up the cost of land near the city and adding non-farm uses to farm communities, this plan harms communities and the interdependencies to make it possible to farm this amazing land sustainably, profitably, and well. And that I think is why I'm here tonight, when I should be moving irrigation and putting my kids to bed. I oppose this expansion because we need to support the agricultural businesses that are here now, rather than businesses that we imagine will come up if we just open up some land. We need to support them by preserving farmland, for sure. We also need to support them by including agriculture and farmlands, protecting the interests in their 20-year plans. You can't just take the farmland that happens to be close to the city, happens to be owned by a willing seller, that happens to look good on the map. Make a real 20-year plan. We need to really consider the diverse interests of agriculture, need to plan for it, not just to survive, but to thrive.
Time, thank you so much. Next, I have David Thomas.
I'd like to turn to this, but they don't cover what I want to speak on tomorrow. Guys, we'll be later.
Later. Jackie Dyke Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Lenahan, city councilors, guests and staff. My name is Jackie Dyke Jones. I'm a fourth-generation farmer and co-owner of Dyke Family Farm LLC in Banks, Roy. I farm in North Plains, Roy, in Banks. On May 10th, I shared with the Planning Commission regarding the agricultural and forest compatibility analysis, my concerns. First of all, it is too elementary, incomplete, and not accurate. And number two, the city did not say anything about the soils, but I do see in the report now, the pages of the soil report. And three, despite being mentioned many times during Senate Bill 4 legislation, the Twelton Valley Irrigation District was also not mentioned. But my frustration was when a committee member asked for the decision to be postponed, to partake in diligence. Staff said no, because an O dot meeting was scheduled in June. That is not okay. This UGB proposal is too aggressive for only 20 years. And it was very overwhelming to read the, see the 318-page packet posted after the ice cream social Thursday night. So this was not very much time. At this time, I hope you will postpone this vote, send it to the people and tell the truth of what is at stake and will be taken away. The incredible farmland, catching carbon, providing clean air, food, fiber, the jobs and agro-businesses. And agriculture is an economic driver in Washington County. I ask for more further inclusive public engagement for everyone who lives in North Plains with the North Plains of Code. This decision will impact not only the lifestyles, but the traffic, land loss, water usage, and will impact everyone's life, not just my personal farm or the agriculture community. So back to the ag and forest compatibility analysis. It was not revised since Thursday, but on page 145, you see the soils. If you were to look beyond the Lego piece of the proposal, all of the proposal is the prime farmlands. The matrix of potential conflicts is offensive because the crops I raised report that the conflict is a lower rating of intermittent conflict. But this is wrong. We care for our crops year-round and I move equipment and tent to them, often multiple times a day, on weekends and holidays, north and south of Highway 26 off Dershow Road. So is the conflict whether I'm conflicting with the proposal on the west side of North Plains? Or is it conflict with my livelihood, safety, and right to farm? I also noticed the USDA cross-scape map attached, which literally is pointless because the farmland is finite and the soils here literally grow anything irrigated or not. In conclusion, I ask for each counselor to look themselves at the DLCD planners now viewer and to see what North Plains is a part of, the bigger picture of Washington County agriculture. I know the city council's goals and this is very far from target. Please grow conservatively, wisely, and value the agriculture around you. Saving farmland is an investment and not only North Plains and Washington County, but in Oregon. Thank you for your time, thank you for your time and your listening.
Next up, I have Melanie McCann.
Mayor Lenahan, councilor, thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Iris Rothermore. I'm testifying today to contest the city's UGB expansion and will submit the written comment I would be able to appear with short notice. First, as a procedural issue, the city must postpone the final election vote. If today is the only opportunity to testify, only four days were provided to be 318 pages plus supplemental materials, causing substantial prejudice for future appeals. It is also unclear how the city could have provided 10 days' mail notice before the hearing on a type of foreuse, as is required by the North Plains Charter, since that written notice must have included a description of the proposed site and the proposal in enough detail to determine what changes were proposed. I had no time to identify other notice issues, like if the notice was provided not only to city residents, but to property owners, who'd land has been to be brought into the UGB and those 250 feet beyond those landowners and ordinance. In general, more than doubling the size of the town's UGB is a major decision and many North Plains residents and those who would be brought to the UGB seem to be unaware of it. In terms of the goals for you for vote ordinance, it was cursory, especially for vote 3, 4, 5, and 6. The city wrote, "These goals do not apply because the city does not include area designated for agriculture or forest reuse." Yet agriculture and forest land is by definition almost never inside the city. If not having ag and forest land within city limits, there's a justification not considering these goals. No UGB expansion would ever need to consider them. As it was, the report analysis of agricultural soils was highly insufficient. It claimed the UGB expansion only had moderate impacts, but impacts could not be more severe due to land that is lost, almost all of which is high-value farmland. Yet it does not appear that the city engaged soil expert. Ode and farming is a soil question and some of the best in Oregon is not the world. A couple of areas have been the largest blocks of MP in class two soil in the state. Agriculture is also an industry and the AOA mentions ag as a driver of local business and a major attractor of employers. Additionally, North Plains is not a part of Metro, but it uses Metro data for convenient growth projections and overlooks Metro data for inconvenience. Metro's 2040 growth concept recommends minimizing the impact of growth on surrounding agricultural natural resource lands and maintaining a separation between non-Metro land and the UGB, including a green corridor. This report mentions North Plains by name as part of that world cover. For industrial land, the AOA says North Plains supply of vacant land offers opportunities for redevelopment, particularly in commercial areas. The city must first vote in Oregon. Regarding industrial land for semiconductor manufacturing, Menville Port is extremely narrowly tailored so that the governor alone, not cities, allow UGB expansions only after determination that Oregon has no good land for semiconductors. And there is viable CHIPS proposals and credible demonstrations for a need for land. Note, I understand that none of the nine CHIPS applications have asked for more land outside or outside UGB. So the need for land has not been worn out. The cost of infrastructure will be massive and has not been adequately addressed here. I urge the city to reconsider this decision. Thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Next up, I have Ira Hopson.
Well done, thank you, Mayor, and council members. So, there we go. I guess, first of all, I'd like to just have a little rebuttal against the cost of a single-family dwelling on a reasonable packs lot where you can raise a family and pets and have a life like we imagine in rural Oregon. The reason we have this false image of land not being available to people and therefore the cost so high is because our government owns 70% of this state and doesn't let anybody live on the land. We have lots of land in Oregon and we just have two big of a government that won't share it with the people. We can't even build a house on five acres that you own. You can't build a house on 24 acres in Washington County. You have so many restrictions on building a house. That's why a house that's sitting on 500 square feet costs $400,000. So that's what's wrong with the picture, okay? We need to let people live like we used to live, where we have space and privacy and room to turn around. So for that, yes, I am in agreement with the other folks that the way you've drawn out using this land is ridiculous. And semiconductors on private farmland, have you done hydraulic studies? Do we know what this is going to do to our water tables? Where's the water coming from? We already have intel sucking all our water out and chugging their toxic stuff supposedly safe back into our rivers. Now we're going to have another one in Washington County? We have a huge state where there's no jobs in the eastern border. Why aren't we taking this outside the tri-county area and giving other people in Oregon a chance to have a nice city, jobs, infrastructure? How much eminent domain is going to take place when you start developing all this? You're going to make four-lane highways and bike trails, so all of us with tractors and trucks and log trucks? You're going to make four-lane highways and bike trails, so all of us with tractors and trucks and log trucks and stuff can barely pass without running over? We are not compatible with this plan in this agricultural area. Do not do this, and we will make sure it will not happen here. This will be the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next up, I have Melanie Mousk.
I couldn't find the folder.
If you were to speak, I'd point it out. Chris Evans.
Good evening again. Chris Evans, representing the landowners, bounded west by the Hay Creek, south of West Union Road, east of Jackson's, on the east side of Jackson School Road, and US twenty-six on the south. The landowners that I represent received written mail notice from the city and the Planning Commission decision. I think we presented that. This has been a multi-year process that featured dozens of meetings, public input, and citizen committees. Thousand friends, many participate in that process. My knowledge, outside base, they will letter that it's sent back summer. It did not challenge the economic opportunity analysis. In my opinion, arriving at your length hour and urging you to disregard everything that has been developed and agreed upon so far is disrespectful to this community, your staff, and everyone who has given their time and effort. Essentially, all of what is being challenged as it relates to the employment needs analysis was previously decided last year in September winter's state agency review. Our region's housing crisis alone should be enough to justify the metric expansion treaty for residential that you followed across as that is defensible, transparent, and thorough to document the need. There has been consistently strong agency, community, landowner, and regional support for this process, including adjacent landowners and neighborhood representatives. The expansion before you was thoroughly methodical and follows the veteran spirit of Oregon's land use system and grand bargain. Development on these lands, in many cases, has been planned for decades. For example, nearly thirty years ago, Clean Water Services installed a high-capacity sewer on my client's property in anticipation of development of that site. Thirty years of North Plains having a hold of its city. As a fifth-generation Oregonian who are peers on the land use system, it bothers me when people misconstrue its purpose and intent in each circumstance as simply it means of increasing growth. I'd like to share a little bit of what I know of this dynamic as it relates to this expansion. During the process of developing Senate Bill four, Thousand Friends consistently stated on record its desire for communities to follow a particular order as established through the process. Less than two months after that bill was signed into law, the letter you have now argues differently. You have done tremendous work, and based on recent statements in this record from Thousand Friends, I'd like to readily read into the record comments from Sam Diaz, executive director of that same organization, in the Oregon Joint Committee on Semiconductors regarding Senate Bill four, which they now cite in opposition to this expansion. And that said, in recognition of the exceptionally tailored language outlined in SB four with the dash fifteen amendment, and recognizing that this is a tool of last resort, we shift our position from opposed to neutral on Senate Bill one. You may wish to compare these comments to correspondence they received today from Thousand Friends, which argues exactly the opposite and encourages me to instead treat SB four as a tool of first resort in your analysis. I would encourage the city of anyone here to review the full record of legislative engagement from Thousand Friends from the twenty-twenty-three session, and you will find more substantial incongruities between that record and the correspondence you were receiving today. I thank you for your time and many hours of support and effort you've put into this.
Next up, I have John Black.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to testify. Am I coming through okay?
I think you have to square that. We might.
There's a.
Push it up.
Push it up. Okay, sorry. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, appreciate the opportunity to testify in this very important matter. I am here to testify in opposition to the expansion of the UGB and particularly to support the continued implementation of Goal Three, agricultural farmland protection. I did testify back in nineteen seventy-three before Senator Halex committed on land use prior to Senate Bill one hundred being passed. And we had a very unique alliance at that time of the timber industry, the agricultural industry, and environmentalists supporting the preservation, particularly of Oregon's very valuable farmlands in the best of the world. At that time, the agricultural industry and timber industry were very concerned with the loss of land base and the loss of vendors who were supplying equipment for that, for being able to, that was devoted to managing that land base. I just heard today about this hearing. I had a chance to skim the three hundred and eighteen pages that were prepared, and it was a very comprehensive argument for this, for the UGB. I also, though, was unable to take a look at the Tooulent Valley Southern Water Conservation District letter that was sent in front of the Thousand Friends letter. I think both of those organizations are very important in this dialogue or in this process of adopting UGB expansions. And UGB expansions really should be the exceptions rather than the rule when it comes to Oregon land use law because of the focus that it had upon farmland protection. I'd like to suggest that you do continue this hearing. I think it's very important that you hear from the citizenry as well as hear informed testimony that takes into account the various pains so far that were submitted in the session. I appreciate the opportunity to testify. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Rudy Keppe.
I am Rudy Keppe, nine four two O O Southeast Longview Road, in Lake Mousse. Madam Mayor, city council, thank you for allowing us all to testify tonight. I didn't want to, I don't have a whole lot to add to what has been said tonight, particularly in those Chris's comments. We go back quite a ways here in North Plains. We started out here in nineteen ninety-seven with previous UGB expansion, which yielded some great neighborhoods in Sunset Ridge and here in Golden. And we have continued to be involved with the city in its movement to grow respectfully and with good diversity and with great new urban neighborhoods. Back in two thousand seventeen, I sat on the citizens advisory board, and we started a whole process of determining the citizens' vision. We had a ton of citizen input. We studied soils. We listened to people wanting livability in the community. And since two thousand seventeen, there literally have been dozens of public hearings. The city has spent tens of thousands, hundred thousands of dollars in consulting fees to create the housing needs analysis, which has been vetted numerous times within the public meetings, as has the economic opportunities analysis. There have been forty or fifty opportunities for people to come forward over the last seven years to be participate in this process. As I said, the previous UGB expansion has resulted in two great neighborhoods in Sunset Ridge and Red Hill, which have followed great new urban principles, conserving, they've been very efficient land uses, higher than average density in the city previously. They are neighborhoods that provide great walkability, great housing choices, and diversity of housing choices, from affordable to luxury. I would encourage the council to stay the course after all these seven years and vote to approve the motion for. Thank you. I think this sort of is.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next up, David Thomas. Are you at our, no, okay. And then I have Victor. Is it Victoria? Thank you. It looks like it ended. Sorry about that. Dem Char.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and members of the North Plains City Council. I am Victoria Dem Char. I am a resident of technically Hillsborough, so my address is eleven thousand Northwest Jackson Corey Road. I am within the quarter. My husband and I own two properties jointly in part with my brother-in-law. We are within study area. So while our address is Hillsborough, we are, our electricity comes from North Plains, and we are within that one-mile radius. I'd like to echo what, some of the comments previously from Melanie McAdams, Jackie Dyke, Erin Nichols, Dean Moberg. This land is valuable. It has unique qualities. It has unique investments that have already been made to it in terms of irrigation strength and in terms of the vision previously of a future where agriculture was central, particularly to the west side of North Plains. What I'd like to engage with tonight is how far this diverged from the goals of Goal One in Oregon land use plan. As I mentioned, I am within the study area. I have two properties within the study area. These are, my husband and I probably discussed a little bit about the farm we have and the five hundred households that we feed. Many of them live within North Plains. We have not heard of this. We heard of this from our friend. And I would say that tonight, I hear three languages in the playground. I have not heard of it until probably three weeks ago from my friend Jackie because of other occasions that we've done regarding land use planning. And because of our concerns as farmers, producer, and landowner, who are within the crook desires of both Hillsborough and North Plains. And I ask for this to be a more open process, a process that invites more people in, not just residents of North Plains, but those affected by the decisions of North Plains. Because if we are going to be included, if we are within study areas, if we are part of this, then please plan with us. Please follow Goal One. Please have adequate citizen involvement and public involvement committees that are not just funded and have money going to consultants, but demonstrate meaningful public involvement that have linguistic support for people who do not speak English or who do not engage in these documents well in English. Our language is incredibly garbled and jargony. And I don't see how this can be construed as public involvement when you have to become citizen with building and that this is the way that we engage. So I ask you to rethink, reconsider, work with consultants, work with others, to engage with the broader community. Because even those of us who try to stay in connection with land use decisions happening around us who care deeply about the land and its future are being overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Best call in the vault. Yes, ma'am. I'll have to have you fill out a card, but.
Who is referred to is Burdo at the end. I'll fill in the address. Save time. And that one.
That's all right. We can certainly wait. So Pat.
Walter, W O L T E R. I'm going to have my turn with my.
And I do want you to, you can actually fill this in after you're done testifying because we will keep it for the record. And any future information or correspondence, we want to make sure we get the correct information.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it's important for me to give you my address. My name is Pat Walter. My husband and I and our children live south of North Plains. My husband used to refer to this jokingly, where we live as South Plains, and tonight I realized it's not a joke. My address is ninety-five fifty-five Northwest Three Sixteen Place. And as one other testimony gave, I haven't prepared my remarks, excuse me. The address legally is Hillsborough, but we have lived here since nineteen eighty-seven. I participated in previous county plan reviews, active in CBO eight for many, many years. Our property has been included because it's been zone exception land in your expansion. I was shocked to hear you say that this is an employment rezoning. Now, I understand that the state elevator has been sold or is going out of business or relocating. I'm not sure. I heard of this meeting this morning from a neighbor as I was passing her on the road. So I would like to see an extension of this. I'm not sure, and I'm just going to mention things that hit me while I was listening. Goal one, citizen involvement. As I mentioned, I've been involved many years in citizen involvement. I had heard the list of people who were involved. They were all agency or government people. I often have heard people refer to expansion into farmland as shovel-ready by developers. I overheard a conversation one time with two developers saying, "This is great. It's shovel-ready." Well, yes, it's farmland. It's shovel-ready. So I would like you to consider what the needs of the residents of the greater North Plains area are, how we identify with this town, where we shop, where we worship, and the impact that that proposal will have on livelihoods, quality of life beyond economic opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Any other folks in the hall wishing to speak? Is there anyone online that is wishing to testify during this time? Let the record show that no one online has raised their hand and wishes to testify at this time. Heather and Steve, do you have any additional comments? Anything that you've heard that you want, you know, maybe you could clarify for us? Any additional conditions?
I'll start. I think Steve probably has some different ones than I do because we sort of took on different parts of this report. Andy, can we move this slideshow to the study area, please? I just want to clarify that one, although I think that the person who testified of that regarding to the east, to left the room, but maybe to the south, we can just make sure we're all on the same page there. Thank you. And I do wish we had made these colors a little more differentiated. I apologize for that. The, so the person testified previously about being on Jackson Corey Road. I think there's some confusion there because it probably is within that one-mile buffer, excuse me, the red dash line. But the study area, if you look at the legend, is actually the green tax lots, the green properties. So that property was not in the study area. So. So that property was not in the study area. So, um, I just want to clarify that because, um, that was um, I, I think, Steve, if you point the pointer all the way to over here. Yeah, I, I think that Jackson Quarry comes up over here. Um, I'm guessing that maybe their property touches the boundary of the one mile buffer, but is not included in the green, um, study area. We weren't able to look at that property because it's a rural reserve. Um, but I do think that, um, the property owner who just testified is to the south here. Um, between, um, Glencoe and, um, and the air acres. Um, so that, that property would be included and that is, as, as the testimony was given, exception land. So by state law, that has to be the first place that we look to expand. We, um, don't have an option not to do that. Um, Steve, you have more on that?
Yeah, I think, you know, I appreciate everyone's testimony tonight, and I think it, it is a good example of, uh, why Oregon's, you know, land use system was established. Because there's a constant tension between, um, accommodating, um, uh, residential unemployment needs, but also protecting and preserving farmland. And that's always going to be, um, a tough, uh, discussion and, and tough decisions, especially um, at the fringe, fringe of communities like this. Um, I just want to make it clear that that, the greenish area that I outlined. Basically, um, the states and the counties said, North Plains, this is the, the area within which you can grow, right? If, um, you need to accommodate twenty years of residential need. You need to accommodate twenty years of employment need. And this green area, that's your, that's your options for where you can accommodate those needs. And so our work from the time that that need was established till now has been to look at within those green areas. That's it. That's the only areas we get to look at. Um, what areas made the most sense to accommodate those, those residential unemployment needs? So I just wanted to make that really clear.
Heather, um, thank you, Mayor. I, I don't think I have much more to add to that. That's the, the realm in which we're required to, to do the planning and, um, you know, I, I really appreciate all the testimony, um, and I'm not a soils expert, so I really appreciate having one in the room. And I really appreciate knowing there's a book about it because we really struggled to find the resources to be able to accomplish that part of, part of the job as, as is evident. Um, but I just, I really appreciate the testimony and, and Steve is right. This is how the land use process works and, and where the balances get made. The city of North Plains has stated goals about becoming more economically independent, not being a veteran community. Um, they're not within metro, um, and so there are different rules that apply that apply to Hillsborough and other cities. Um, there's a stated need, an adopted stated need, and we are required to look at a very limited amount of area and it, it all happens to be, or at least part, high-value farmland. Um, so I agree with all of you, and I think if there's questions, we're happy to answer them.
All right. Um, at this time, I'm going to open a discussion up for councilors. And any questions or comments that they'd like to make?
I see a lot of people in this room and online as well. My count's like forty, or forty-one, they're moving outside. I was showing that this week. Uh, one of the everybody showed up. My count is forty to forty-one, people that I've gotten out online. Uh, my question is, um, how common are we that we did email or not even know, but send notice to everybody? That forever, I guess, or? Who does, who does, is it a few?
I defer that to city staff and unfortunately, I think Steve Miller maybe would know that better.
We, we did public notice as required before the planning commission. I talked about, we did public notice as required before the planning commission meeting, which goes into the newspaper. We posted on the news section of the city's website. Um, we did it again for this meeting. It's posted at least probably ten days before the meeting, um, and again on the city website. Um, it's if I have a chance, I, I will post it on the boards, the three places that we post the agenda that's not required that we do that, but if I get a chance, I do do that. I did it with the planning commission one. I didn't get a chance to do it with this one, um, because I had some time off. But we followed all the state guidelines required, um, getting public notice in the newspaper and on the city website. Um, and the, um, pack meetings, I think, were posted on the city's website. Um, and those were what have been going on for the last three, three years. Um, they were all on the city calendar. All these meetings are on the city calendar. City council meetings are on the city calendar. The agendas are on the calendar. Um, the Thursday before the meetings, same with the planning commission. Um, agendas are on the calendar, the Thursday before the meetings. Um, we, we meet all, we follow all the state guidelines for publishing, everything.
For those of you who don't know, man, Chris Crane, the city during office, I just want to note that the uh, ten-day notice requirement that was Adams referred to is not aligned in this instance. The ten-day notice requirement, your city code only applies to the first hearing, um, proposal, which was before the planning commission. This is not the first hearing. So secondly, the, um, that notice requirement applies to a proposal to rezone property and, uh, even if this is approved, it will, there will be many more steps before any property is rezoned. So that, that particular notice requirement doesn't apply in this instance. Uh, as Lori mentioned, the city followed all the required steps.
Hi, I have a second. I have a follow-up question. I don't know, B, A B, it says first reading by title only, audience, uh, for, for, for maybe. Could this be a first, does that mean a first reading or is that different language?
Correct. Tonight would be the first reading. So if there's a motion to approve, that would be the first reading. Uh, under the city charter requires two readings and two separate meetings, um, unless, um, you can by unanimous consent, approve an ordinance at a same, under the city charter.
He is the first reading. Would this require notice as well or not?
And, and, no, just because, uh, no, the, the charter requirements for a first reading don't include any particular notice requirements. Just no notice requirements for your charter.
I see. So the, the term first reading is only a, uh, legislative language.
Correct. Thank you, correct.
Councilor Smith? Pastor Payton?
No comment. Thank you.
Pastor Kendall?
I don't know. This is hard, uh. I made my living on agriculture for fifty years, uh, serving growers in the county. Over those fifty years, I've watched, uh, all these farmers evaporate, more or less. All disappeared, all the small guys. Right now I can drive in about six minutes. I can be right down here where Walden used to live. It's all being developed. It's four miles from here. And over the fifty years that I've lived in town this year, when I came here, it was only four hundred people. Now it's about thirty-five hundred. I think we've done a lot of it well. Keeping the town small, it was all due to the citizens. And because of the charter we had here, that, uh, the people had a vote for the, um, expansion of UGV. But now the state is taking that away from us. So when I look at that, uh, look at this prime farm ground, it's, it's sad that the city is going to happen. I, but it's not stopping. I, I, I can't stop it. We can't stop it. Remember, we're five minutes away from high tech. Um, I kind of feel, um, let it be known to me. I've never said it to anybody else in this room or in the world, I think, but, uh, if Indell hadn't been here, we wouldn't have these problems. But it's here and everything else that came with it. And, uh, is this a fifty-year plan? May I ask you if it's a twenty-year plan? This, this.
This is a twenty-year land use plan.
Mm-hmm. So what's going to happen in twenty years? I mean, um, it's not going to stop. I, we can't stop it and, uh, I feel really bad for, uh, we went, did a lot of work on this, staying small, but, uh, right now we have to. Did we do that? Or we're going to be part of Hillborough or, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, Southier. It's tough. I won't be here, but, uh, we really worked hard to get here and to keep our identity and, uh, I want to go forward. I feel bad and, uh, not a lot of people know about this, but we're so small. Um, and I think everybody figured that we're just going to stay this way, but, uh, we've been working on this a long time and, uh, I'm, I'm torn to have to vote for this, but I think I'm going to because, uh, I can't, we can't stop it. If we could, I, I might vote against this. So that's my feelings for now. Let me have more. I don't know.
Well, and I, I think I want to, um, echo a little bit of what you said, uh, Councilor Kendall. When I moved here, there were nineteen hundred people and today there's about thirty, thirty-five hundred people. And, uh, seven years ago, when I ran for mayor, um, Household fifteen seventy-three was signed into law. And basically it took the right to annex, um, to vote on annexation away from the people. And we were one city in the state of Oregon with many other cities who that particular law affected. And I ran because basically we were caught with our shorts down. It came and went and we were not at the table. We were not at the table regionally. We were not at the table. And what I mean by that is that mayors and city councilors were not going to regional and county-wide meetings. And I vowed that when I became mayor, that that's what we were going to do. We were going to have a seat at the table. And we were going to plan our future and we were going to have input and have the say on how we get to grow. Now, we've been working on this for well over three years, maybe even longer. There are some people in this room who have been working on this plan for over twenty-five years. When I have residents coming to the town and they look at Brent Hills and they go, how can that happen? I say, that's been in the works for over twenty-five years. Sunset Ridge, same thing. And those folks have been in this community for a really long time. And while I respect their business and what they do, I also said, you don't get to tell us how we're going to plan our future. And if I want everybody at the table and I want not just, not just the developers, but I want staff, I want council, I want residents. We have noticed and noticed and noticed. We've even gone door to door to the residents in this community and handed out flyers to publicize meetings. So I, I, I just want to, I want to track a little bit. And you said, you know, nobody knew about it. People weren't paying attention. We've been pushing this information out to folks for the last three years. And we've been very transparent about it, much more transparent about it than other cities in Washington County. I've had people come up to me and say, geez, we didn't know anything about this, but we knew that Hillsborough wanted to grow. We knew Hillsborough wanted to aspire to do what they wanted to do when they wanted to do it. And they dug really super deep, deep pockets and they did. But we have in, invested so much time and energy and we're all volunteers. And we have invested so much time and energy in this process to make it work for our community. We have folks, I leave this community every day to go work at Hillsborough. And I drive through farmland and I appreciate it. I grew up in farmland in the Midwest and I appreciate it. But I think it's also really important to have control of your own destiny and your own fate. I mean, your own destiny. It's just like, I want to be able to say, hey, we get to grow and this is where we get to grow. And that's what I tell my residents. When my residents complain about the growth, I said, come to the table, come to the meeting, be a part of the conversation. Because you matter to how we intend to grow and where we intend to grow. And this is something that, you know, in twenty years from now, I mean, we have to do this process. The state says we have to do, we have to have it twenty years of land. Okay, fine. I'm thinking even longer than that. We should be looking at what is this going to look like in fifty years or a hundred years? Pastor Kendall was right. It's not going to stop. We can stop it. We can put buffers and boundaries around the things. But we have to be at the table to do that. And we have to have these tough, tough conversations. And no, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't make a lot of folks in this room happy and I, I, I'm sorry. But North Plains wants to control some destiny instead of someone else coming in and controlling that for us. Thank you. Councilor Sheldon?
I'm probably going to say I would echo a lot of what the mayor has mentioned, as she mentioned that down the line. But we are in lockstep in that we cannot become what, uh, we don't want to be, which is a bedroom community. We have to have employment plans. We have to have housing for those employment plans. It is going to grow onto adjacent farmland. The thing that disappoints me probably more than anything is that this room is full comparative to any of our other public hearings we have. And I don't see anybody out there that I actually think is my constituent. I represent the constituents in this city. None of those people are here opposing this. We've had multiple hearings about this. We've talked about what we want to do. We've been smart about what we've been doing. We've spent a lot of hours discussing the structure of how we go about finding land that we need in the right places so that we're not invaded by Hillsborough. And we can be our own community. We can have our own identity. And that's, that's the cornerstone of that is participation by the folks who live in our community. And a few of those folks have participated. Yeah, we have to weigh what our adjacent neighbors think about us, and I think it's pretty important that that's part of that, but to, to basically deny the fact that we haven't done outreach is ridiculous. We've been at this for a very long time, very intently, very purposefully. And we're trying to do this as smart as we can possibly do it. Now, we might did something wrong, but I think we've spent enough time at it and, you know, it's just disappointing that, um, so with you folks maybe weren't there earlier in the process to bring up some of these things. And sometimes, you know, this comes at the eleventh hour because we act a lot of times when the cliff is, we're at the precipice. But I, uh, I have to think about the constituency that elects me and what we're doing for our community and what they're saying about what they need. And we have a pretty good idea of what they want to do. So we're trying to construct it in that way. And that's why we arrived at what we've arrived at and that's really my only comments to this council or to anyone.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm just going to give, um, Counselor Smith and Counselor Payton another opportunity, um, looking for my close hearing.
Perfect. Yeah, I've lived here myself seven years. I knew about this process from day one. So being a new member, uh, one of my first meetings five years ago was part of UGV. So I know this has been going a long time. There's been a lot of volunteer effort, a lot of time put into it. And a lot of community members have been part of it. You can read in the pamphlet there, all the names listed. And so this has been going on a long time in North Plains. So of course, North Plains members or, or community members have, have known about this process. And so I'm like with Russ that, uh, there's a lot of people from the other side out there. You know, and my opinion is that, yes, we are restricted by what the state wants us to do. And so we've been doing this process visually and as best we could with the idea of not keeping this bedroom community. And that's the problem with it. The tax base is the owner more than anybody else. Because we're the bedroom community for Intel, basically, and some of the other communities in Hillborough. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Counselor Payton?
Thank you. I just want to echo everything that council has said, staff and all the, the members that have attended tonight's meeting. I, I think this is one of the biggest turnouts I've actually ever seen for council. And I want to say thank you because I know, I know that it has an impact on your livelihood and I know it has an impact on the future of North Plains and even surrounding communities. That being said, it's also, I That being said, it's also, I feel like we're backed up against a wall. We don't have, it's a lose-lose situation, right? And I feel like we've done the best that we can with what we have. And I just strongly urge, are we part of the solution or part of the problem? Because right now, we are trying to find a solution that brings everyone along in that journey. And I definitely hear the sentiment that, you know, just now hearing about this, but also thinking about the rural customers, rural, you know, residents who go to the post office and city agendas and everything is posted on the post office bulletin board. It's all posted online. And I just really, really encourage, be part of that solution before it becomes a problem. Because right now, I feel like we're at a consensus and we are, we're going to lose some along the way. And it's really disheartening. And I really want to say thank you for coming tonight. And please continue to be part of the solution with us as a community.
Thank you, Counselor Pfeifert. And again, before the closing hearing, I do want to thank all of you for coming tonight and providing testimony or just sitting in the room and hearing from each other and from hearing from the council, then hearing from staff. And no matter how this goes, I really do encourage you to stay involved and stay engaged in this community. This is a pretty cool place to live. We know that. And we appreciate the space that we have between our friends to the south. And we want to do everything that we can to kind of create that space. So please stay engaged and thank you again for your time. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 9:12. So you all know what's before us. We have a resolution, I'm sorry, the E ordinance for 90, which is first adopting the federal boundary amendment and comprehensive plan text amendment, what says the council?
I'm going to move to approve the first reading of ordinance for 90, which is an ordinance, the city of North Plains amending the Hillborough boundary and approving an associated, associated, associated comprehensive plan text amendments.
I will second that motion.
All right. We have reversed by Counselor Sheldon, seconded by Counselor Page. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you very much, council. All right. Next on our agenda, new business, anything to report? Hearing none. Item 10 is unfinished business. Anything to report there? Hearing none. Item 8 is the city manager report. Any, anything that you'd like to highlight?
I just want to shout out community participation, everything for what's noted that. Also, big thanks to all the volunteers, the council, and staff that participated in the anniversary event last Thursday. It was really well done. One of the most people I've seen at a community event in one day in my time here. And so a proud moment and a lot of fun.
That was pretty amazing. I don't think we have, the NPA doesn't have the final count yet on how many bowls of ice cream or root beer colors we dished out. But we should have that, you know, probably sometime next week. Also, I wanted to mention that we have a park dedication. So we're dedicating Jody Mae's Park this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. So we will also dedicate Furman's basketball court. So we'll have the ribbon cutting for the park. And then I believe Counselor Martinez will say a few words with Furman's family to dedicate that basketball court. And then the following Saturday, which is June 17, is the Strawberry Shortcake Feast and that is here as well. I believe 10:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m.? Yes. Oh, 4:00. Starts at 10:00 a.m. Yeah. All that information is online. Are there any council reports? Counselor Page?
I intend the charity event for the Diamond Diamonds for the Washington County Family Justice Center. And I saw a lot of people that were elected over there doing their supporting. I was kind of hoping that next year, some more city council members, maybe the city can talk to them about how they were over there. Because just the awareness, a lot of people that are women means or somebody that knows the language or speak, they need, they need help. And just, in fact, the people that ask that are in the community, just get help, you know, put them in touch with these areas that they're bringing. So next year, I'll, before, before it happens, I'll try to bring it up and see whether we have a higher number of presence there.
Thank you very much, very much for that report. I know I was at a retirement party and I missed it, first year that I missed that event. It's a pretty special event for an area of important cause. Anyone else with a council report? All right. Counselor Pfeifert?
No council reports for me this one. Thank you.
Counselor Sheldon?
No.
All right. I think that is about it. I think Counselor Martinez might have to switch a meeting from Counselor Pfeifert and if she might reach out to you or Counselor Sheldon, so it's up to her. She should be reaching out to you. All right?
Which meeting is that?
Is that this Wednesday? Wednesday. Thank you, Seamy.
I'll take it. I'll take it, yeah.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, Russ. I appreciate that. All right. All right. So I guess, just before we go, our next meeting, we have June 19 is the holiday. It's June 10. So that's a holiday. So our council meeting will actually be on Tuesday, June 20. So with that, thanks for continuing. We're going to need to, thank you again.